Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Betty's probably tired.
Not yet.
Madam Clerk? Under appointments at 10:00 AM, Thogus Products Company, City of Avon Lake regarding a tax abatement. 10:15, Tim Green, Director of Voices for Children, will inform the public on the agency. 10:30, Chuck Mackin, Supervisor for the Charles Berry Baskiel Bridge, will also inform the public on the bridge. 10:45, Rick Novak, Executive Director of the Lorraine Port Authority, will receive the Hero of the Black River Award. And 11:30, the Transportation Improvement District will meet. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There are no investments, there are no appropriations. Number four, transfers.
So moved.
Second, but I'd like to hold 11, page 11 of four.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within Jurisdictional Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, Amendment Resolution Number 03245, adopted April 3, 2003, appointing various trustees to Lorraine County Transportation Improvement District. In accordance with ORC 5540.02A and C2, Lorraine County should only have five members; therefore, the Community Development Director will be placed in the ex officio capacity.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an entry into various purchase of service contracts on behalf of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services to assist OWF participants in locating employment. One, Christine A. Bulkholz for fiscal year 2004 Career Counseling Program in the amount not to exceed $63,064.00 effective October 2, 2003 through June 30, 2004. Two bids were received with this being the most responsive and cost-effective. Two for Workforce Investment Institute of Lorraine County for fiscal year 2004 Pathways Program in the amount not to exceed $24,465 effective October 2, 2003 through June 30, 2004.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various services to be purchased from Child Care Resource Center, Lorraine, Ohio, using Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services Child Care Quality Funds for fiscal year 2004 effective October 2, 2003 through June 30, 2004. Authorized Mayor Lou Golsky, Director, to execute contract on behalf of the Board with County Prosecutor's approval as due form for one, continuing education training in the amount of $12,600, and Child Development Associate Training in the amount of $12,900.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management Agency, authorize the extension of the operation of its bulb-and-ballast recycling program through the end of 2003, and pay Aircycle Corp., Broadview, Illinois, up to $5,624 for shipping and recycling the collected materials.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, appoint Catherine A. Rednauer as a member on Lorraine County Children's Services Board. Term will be from October 2, 2003, expiring December 31, 2006, who will replace Pastor Cunningham, who resigned.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve an entry into contract on behalf of Lorraine County Sheriff and Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Service, Inc., to provide certain alcohol, drug, substance abuse group counseling services to inmate's house in Lorraine County Correctional Facility effective October 1, 2003 through September 30, 2004, with a 30-day cancellation cost of $11 per inmate.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve an entry into renewal contract with Dr. Di Renzo to provide a minimum of three hours to a maximum of four hours of dental service a week to inmate's house in the Lorraine County Correctional Facility. This contract is effective October 1, 2003 through September 30, 2004, with another one-year renewal option. The hourly rate is $67 per hour, which is a $2 increase over last year's contract.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Commissioner?
I'd like to request a brief executive session to talk about a matter of potential Nothing for her this morning.
Mr. Rinas, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I also need an executive session. I have several litigation issues. Secondly, I would like to ask the Commissioners for a resolution. Sometime last year, we issued a coastal erosion loan to Bender Development to help them put condominiums and help shore up the coastline in Lorraine there. They are now prepared to proceed, and in order for them to do that, we have to give them what's called a consent of mortgagee to create condominiums there. So what happens, although we previously approved the general concept, they now have to submit to us the very specific plans they have, and we have to agree to that consent. So I would ask the Commissioners for a resolution for that consent and authorize the President of the Board to sign on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Also move.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners report?
Commissioner Blair?
I would like to give a little report when Rick Novak is here. It goes along with the award, so I'll just defer that till later. Thank you.
And I have nothing.
Old business?
None.
None here.
New business?
None here.
Board correspondence?
Will the reading be waived?
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Public comment.
Robert Kish, I live in Elaria, Ohio. And...
Bob, I would ask that you spell your last name. Anyone speaking before the Commissioners, please spell their last name for the media.
Okay, thank you. K-I-S-H. And I'm gonna do today is a little trash talking. I own a vehicle that burns dual fuel. There are many in the area vehicles that burn dual fuel. It's called E-85. E-85 is 85% alcohol. You can't drink it, they got... And 15% gasoline, or any combination that you can be mixed with the 10%, always up to 85%. The vehicle has sensors that will drive. Now, the only problem is, the only alcohol filling station is down in Hilliard, Ohio. You keep talking of building new monuments to the area, a new elections building. When you've got buildings, one of the worst things you can do is have storefronts boarded up or buildings that are unused. You just look at the news, it made 60 Minutes. They want to tear down some perfectly good buildings in the Rocky River area so that they can take these buildings that they're calling blighted areas. And Sam Donaldson talked to the mayor. Turns out, the mayor lives in a blighted house. He only has one bedroom, one bathroom, and only a one-car garage. And their definition of a blighted area consists of two bathrooms and a two-car garage. So if they want your property, they will get your property, one way or the other. This was America. Wake up and see the light. They're confiscating property so far, as far as I know, along the lake shore. They tried to confiscate mine, basically, by filling in a creek. Anyhow, E-85 fuel can be made from waste farm products. It doesn't have to be the corn itself. It can be made from waste material which is being dumped in Oberlin right now, as we speak. It can also be made from sewer byproducts, so you so to speak. So it seems to me that if we're going to go ahead and create jobs, and to save energy, and clean the atmosphere, and do all these other things, what better way than to possibly build a plant that can actually hire people? Because I have a feeling there will be more cars on the road 10 years from now than there are today. Unless, of course, we go into what they call a D, not an R, but we go into a depression, things will change. So you people are stewards of the funds that are collected. They're called taxes. You don't go out and say, "Well, this is possible. We'll spend as much as we can, and we'll borrow $25 million in New York, and New York will benefit from the churning effect." The churning effect is what causes muddy waters. You can take a perfectly clean stream, take a stick, stir up the bottom. What do you have? Muddy waters. So I'm saying, there's a muddy road ahead, please don't drive down it over and over again. That will not improve the muddy road. Basically, let's pave that road. Let's pave it with a plant if that's what needs to be done. If you own a gas station, I don't know if it's still current or not, they will give you $30,000, either the US government, possibly the state, to put in an ethanol pump. Right now, in some of the states, in the literature I just recently read, they are giving you a $40 card to buy ethanol fuel with. It costs 2 cents more in Hilliard than it does at the nearby pumps. But $40 at 2 cents a gallon will go a long way. And they just recently had a promotion in some of the corn-growing states where they're actually allowing you, I don't know, one day, and it's probably over by now, and I'm not gonna drive to Iowa to check it out, absolutely free E-85 fuel. So, Mr. Billman, I'm looking in your direction, I certainly hope we can go ahead and quit wasting our energy, like I sometimes feel I'm wasting my energy by coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Well, they say two heads are better than one. Sometimes we really need to hear from people. Not sometimes, all the time.
Commissioners, if I might, for the public's sake, inform Mr. Kish as well as the Commissioners and general public that we have been working on this issue and biodiesel fuel in addition, and we're, among other things, actively right now trying to pursue using animal waste to produce fuel for use not in vehicles but in electric power plants. So we are working on that. We have had some initial conversations with Mr. Billman, so I'll let him, if he wants, at some point to speak about that. But the county is working on this. I appreciate Mr. Kish's comments, but we are working on this.
Good, that's good to know. Thanks, Ron. Anyone else here that would like to address the Board? Comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Got 10:30?
No, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Could we do...
Go to executive.
Could we do our executive session in 10 minutes? Okay. I move we go into executive session, get as much done as we can before 10 o'clock.
Okay. Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Commissioners have recessed from executive session. It is about 10 after 10. We'll do the tax abatement with Thogus Products Company, City of Avon Lake.
Who's representing the city here?
I'd choose to turn it over to Ron first.
Ron? Ron Twining?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have a tax abatement that came, uh, come to the city from the city of Avon Lake, and Mayor Burner is here today to address the Commissioners concerning this project.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mayor Robert Burner, B-E-R-N-E-R. It is, um, during these economic times, it's always a pleasure for us to see our businesses looking to expand and grow in our community. Thogus Products is here this morning to request an abatement for an expansion that they're planning at their plant. Thogus Products moved to Avon Lake in 1978. They have an exceptional reputation in the industry. Their president, Kathleen Hovin, has won several awards and has been recognized for her accomplishments as a female business owner. She owns 89.4% and Helen Thompson's owns 10.6% of the company, making this a 100% minority-owned female business. In the last three years, they have invested over $1 million in new equipment in the city of Avon Lake without requesting any tax abatement. They currently have an investment in Avon Lake of over $5 million. They employ 49 full-time permanent positions. Their request is for an abatement on $310,000 worth of new equipment and inventory. Their request is for 100% abatement for 10 years. And the City of Avon Lake School District, City of Avon Lake School District, and the Lorraine County General Vocational Schools have both been informed of this abatement and have both agreed to participate in this and support.
And we have letters to that effect.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
If there's any questions that the Commissioners may have this time, I'd be happy to answer them. We also have the representatives from Thogus Products here. The President, Kathleen Hovin, is also here if you'd like to ask her any questions.
Now, I read the information. I have no questions, Betty.
Thank you for the background comments that I find interesting, that it's a female owned. In fact, two female owners, I like that. I'm not a sexist or anything. Did you have any further comment, Ron, on this issue?
Staff has reviewed the information, and the persons of Rebecca Jones and Kelly Glenn, and they recommend approval. This was submitted to Jerry Innis on behalf of the County Prosecutors for a legal review.
Thank you, Mancher. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion?
I'm here.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming with your legal staff and representatives of the company. Good morning, and thank you for waiting for us. Sorry.
It's about 10:11. Do you want to do the 10:15, or...
Yes, let's do it. Tim is here. Tim?
Tim Green.
Do you want to put your presentation on, please? Good morning.
Uh-oh. We have to push it a little bit higher. Good morning, Commissioner Blair, Commissioner Facy. I was asked today to come to speak a little bit about Voices for Children program and what we are and what we do. Voices for Children is a nonprofit court-based program through Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court. We're also a member of a national organization called CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocate. There's over 980 CASA programs in our country. Here in the state of Ohio, we have 31 CASA programs just like ours, which is called Voices for Children, that serve 33 counties in our state. We train, we recruit and train volunteers in our own community to serve abused, neglected, independent children that come into our court system. These are volunteers who are committed, who have a heart for the safety and well-being of abused and neglected independent children. We recognize we can't control where these children come from, but we have something to do with where they end up. Our guardians are from all spectrums, very diverse, men, women, Caucasian, African-American, Hispanic, people who have been grandparents, great-grandparents, parents themselves, a variety of backgrounds, diverse in terms of their education, their employment. The median age of our guardians is 50.6 years of age. A lot of our guardians are full-time workers. Even though there's a lot of differences, different experiences, there is one commonality that we all have, and that's to make sure that children are safe. We've seen kids continue to fall through the cracks in our systems. That's been done in the past, and it's done now. And our CASA programs are here to help seal some of those cracks. These are people who generally care about children. They have no hidden agendas. They're there because they want to be there. And these, our guardians are wonderful people. I love them dearly. As the Director of this program, we've been here since 1990, and last year, we had 112 Guardian Lightums who served 440 children. Two years ago, it was 385 children we served, and then a year after that, in 2001, it was 420. So from 2000 up to 2002, we've increased in terms of the number of children we've served. We've also increased the numbers of volunteers. When I first came on about three years ago, our volunteer base was between 65, 70 guardians. Now we're almost up to 140. We have a Board of Directors who are wonderful people that meet once a month, who help us in terms of marketing what we do, recruiting. We have a commercial now we've been playing on cable. We do newspaper ads, radio spots. We do fundraising events in the communities. We just did one here at the Lorraine Apple Festival, just to make people aware of what we are and what we do. And they've done a really excellent job in terms of helping us recruit. And when we, guardians do come in, before we even do our training classes, they come in, and we do a web check, we do a criminal background check on these individuals. We will meet with them individually and do a very informal interview with them to get to know them better and us better, and who they are, because this isn't your typical volunteer work. This is very, uh, it's work that's, you have to be a committed person, and the people we have are committed, because of what they do when they are assigned to case. They interview the children, they interview the family members, we're able to go into the schools, talk to foster parents, talk to anyone that has any direct or indirect relationship with this child or children. And they take that information and put that information into a report, because every day in our country, here and across the country, magistrates and/or judges are making those final decisions about these futures of abused, neglected, independent children. Should the child remain in their home? Should a child be removed from their home temporarily, potentially even removed permanently and placed into an adoptive home? These are, these are, these are choices and decisions that judges and magistrates have to make, and we are able to give our courts very detailed, informative information about the children, about the people in these children's lives, making sure that their best interests are being met, making sure their needs are being addressed. And we're there. Sometimes we could be a thorn in people's sides, but I think overall, the community understands us, they understand what we're doing. These are people here for children. We care about children, we love children. Children are our future, and they deserve to have permanency in their life, they deserve to be safe, they deserve to have people who are stable in their lives to help them with their needs. And so our guardians do so many great things. They attend hearings with me, they investigate, they interview, they write reports, and then they monitor the case. And that's so key. A lot of times, monitoring, sometimes we let things fall to the sides, where our guardians stay with them on a monthly basis, making sure the children are still safe, making sure parents are following their case plan, because again, all the cases we're involved in, children's services are involved in. They're the ones who filed a motion to our court asking us to get involved. Anytime a child comes into court as abused, neglected, or dependent, court's mandated to appoint a Guardian Lightum. History, historically, that's been the role of a court-appointed attorney. Since CASA came in back in 1977 until present day, the courts are now coming to us with these cases, recognizing that if our guardian may take one case per year, where sometimes attorneys, and I talk to attorneys, they play an excellent role, but they may have 150 to 200 cases a year. It's just a time issue. Where our guardians are able to step in and really spend a lot of quality time on their case to really know the child, to really know the needs of these children, and making sure parents are doing what they need to do, so if the plan is to allow the child to remain with the parents, or maybe put them back with the parents, that they're doing okay. We recognize that most parents, they need some help, they need some assistance and support, and so we're there, you know, to make sure that's being done. Other than that, that's a very small, and that shows much more that we do. I gave the Commissioners a copy of our manual, kind of give some demographics. We're always looking to increase in numbers of, in terms of volunteers would be males. 85% locally and nationally in terms of staff and our Guardian Lightums is female and Caucasian. To me, it doesn't matter what gender, race, color, sex, religion, it's a person who really cares about a child, wants to help a child out. However, statistically looking, we do need to improve in terms of number of males, as well as being more diverse in terms of African-American and Hispanic volunteers. Our program has done a real good job in terms of going out into the communities, going to El Centros, going to African-American festivals, and a variety of things. We're trying to reach out, and we've done a good job with that, and hopefully down the road, those numbers will increase. But that's an issue that only our program, but national with CASA, is having that difficulty, and hopefully we can increase. And we haven't, actually, overall, we've increased with males and African-Americans. Hispanic volunteers have been pretty low right now, but we are trying to branch out all over our county to make people aware of what we do. And it's not an easy job. It's not meant for everyone, but if, if you have the heart for it and you get involved in it, the pleasure is there when you know that children are safe and that those cracks are being sealed, and that...
It's a good feeling. Tim, would you give the telephone number if there are people that want to volunteer, because this is an excellent program?
Yeah, our phone number's 440-329-5158.
Just repeat that one minute, I think. He's trying to write it down. He'll put it on the screen when they show the...
Okay. It's 440-329-5158. We do two trainings a year, one in the fall and spring. Our fall training session's about ready to start. October 11th, October 18th, October 25th, and our last session is November 1st. On four Saturdays, we bring in a variety of court people, children's services, a variety of people, and we have a training curriculum that we go through with our guardians to help equip them. So when they get through those sessions, they also do observation in court with me and one of my actual guardians, so they get a chance to see how things go. So our next class is coming up soon. So basically, you give us a call to our office, and we send out the application form, because you have to fill out an application form, a form with three references, and once we get that back, we bring them in and go through the process. So that's how that works.
And the people are screened. Yes, several years ago, I went through the program, the training program, and I thought it was excellent, and I'm sure by now you've improved a lot.
Yeah, we've used a national CASA curriculum, but it's really, it really hits the heart of what we're doing, and really helps equip these, the people who are guardians, to train them and help them, so when they get involved in these cases, they're gonna understand what they're getting into and what they're doing.
And there is a big difference between the court-appointed attorneys having the time to do this and the Guardian Lightums that are volunteers, and a lot of times retired people, or people, you know, that just can take the time to really investigate on the child's behalf, and they also represent children in court, right?
Correct. They are the voice of the child. Everyone's represented. A parent typically is represented by a defense attorney, children's services represented by the prosecutor. We are there to represent the child's best interests. We're that child's voice, because again, the majority of the children who are dying in our country is from birth to three years of age. That's a high percentage of the children that we're also serving, so they need someone to speak up for them and their rights.
And I know there are Guardian Lightums where the children really take their heart. I mean, they take the Guardian Lightum's heart because they are compassionate people. Thank you, Tim. You did an excellent job for us.
Thank you for having me. You guys have a great day.
Well, Chuck is here. Do we want to...
Sure.
Chuck, do you want to just give your presentation?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking...
No, that's fine.
He answered.
I was ready.
I knew you were here.
Um, yeah, if you'd want. First of all, I'm Chuck Mackin, M-A-C-K-I-N, and I'm Superintendent on the Charles Berry Baskiel Bridge in Lorain. And I've been employed by the county for twenty-nine years in December, and I've been superintendent since nineteen eighty-nine. And what I've got, Ron's passing out some flyers that we had made it, made up, and it explains a little bit about the history of the bridge, and it's got some facts and figures, and it also plugs our website, which I'm kind of proud of. I think we've got a really neat website, and it's definitely worth taking a look at. And what I thought I'd do here today, if it's all right, I would just tell you a little bit about the history of the Baskiel Bridge, and then I would just run some facts and figures by you in no particular order, and then if you had any questions, I'll, I'll try to answer them for you, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you.
Anyway, a little bit about the bridge. The bridge was actually built in the late nineteen thirties and opened up in nineteen forty, along with the Lofton Henderson Bridge. They were actually opened up on the same day in October of nineteen forty. And the Baskiel Bridge replaced an existing swing bridge, which was, which was just north of the bridge, the present bridge. And baskiel, at the time, at the time the bridge was built, it was the largest baskiel bridge in the world. And baskiel means a counterbalanced bridge. One, we always like to tell them it was named after Jacques Baskiel, but I don't know if there was such a Jacques Baskiel or not, but it sounds good anyway. But anyway, baskiel means counterbalanced. And basically, if you, if you can picture a teeter totter, and one, the bridge actually pivots on bearings, and then you have a counterweight on one end, and you have the span which, which spans the river on the other end. And it takes very little power to actually raise the bridge. And it's all electric, and it's got a gear reduction system, and that's basically how the thing works. Like I say, it was built and opened up in nineteen forty, and was the largest bridge of that type in the, in the world. And now it's probably maybe fourth or fifth in the world. I'm not really, I'm not really clear on that, but it's still a very good-sized bridge. It remained basically unchanged until the late nineteen eighties. And at that time, they, they usually figure these bridges will last approximately fifty years before they need any major rehab. And in the late eighties, the bridge was rebuilt, it was getting in, in pretty bad shape in certain areas. The salt really affects the bridges, as it does your car. Salt laying on the bridge and beams and everything really, really plays havoc with the bridge. So the bridge was built, or rebuilt in the late eighties, and the deck was replaced, the heating system was replaced, the drive system was replaced. It was a twelve million dollar rehab at the time, and pretty much everything that could be replaced at the time was replaced. And one of the big things that was done at the time was, it used to be a two-person operation, and you had two people raising the bridge. If you ever drive across the bridge, you'll see two towers, and there was a person in each tower, and each person controlled their own tower, controlled the span, and they had to work very closely together to be able to raise the bridge. And in eighty-eight, when the rehab was done, it was made into a one-person operation. The, the complete operation is done from the west side of the bridge, one person is up there and, and operates the bridge. We still can raise the east side of the bridge from the east side, but, but we only, you know, we only do that if, if we had an emergency. So that was, that was one of the big things in nineteen eighty-eight. And then on Veterans Day in nineteen eighty-eight, the bridge was renamed for Charles Berry. And Charles Berry is, as I'm sure most of you are aware, is, was a Marine from Lorain who was killed on Iwo Jima and given the Medal of Honor, and the bridge was renamed in his honor. And one of the, one of the little stories, I've, I've gone and done a few speaking engagements, and I, and I'm no public speaker by any means, but one of the things I like to tell is, and it's kind of ironic, my old boss down there, Don Myers, who knew the system backwards, forwards, inside and out, was there, he, he had cancer, and he wanted to see the bridge completed, the rehab project. And he passed away on November tenth of nineteen eighty-eight, and then the bridge was renamed the Charles Berry Bridge on November the eleventh of nineteen eighty-eight. So that's kind of ironic, and kind of like an end of an era. And then, and then I've, I've been there ever since, in charge of the bridge. But it's just, it was just the way things worked out like that, and he never, he put so much effort into that. I, I remember at the time, I would, I would come to Aluri to pick up our paychecks, and I'd drop Myers' check off to the house for him, and he, he would have a list of stuff for me to do. Check with a contractor, did they do this, did they do that, make sure they do this, make sure they do that. And he never got to see the thing finished. And then the next day, it was renamed. So that's kind of, I don't know, kind of ironic, I guess. But renamed for Charles Berry on Veterans Day in nineteen eighty-eight. Another thing I would like to touch on, on July first of nineteen eighty-nine, the ODOT took over the funding of the bridge, which has really helped us out a lot. At the time, we would send ODOT a quarterly report, and then they would send us a check for the funding of the bridge. And my budget now is approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year. And now we send it to them on a monthly basis, and we get a check back, which is really, helps us out, definitely helps us out. But that took place on July first of nineteen eighty-nine. And then again, in, in the late nineties, there was a, a project going on in, in ODOT. We, we put it, we added a maintenance building down at the bridge, which is under the west approach of the bridge. We also added a time, at that time, we added a auxiliary generator on the east side of the bridge and a transformer. Now we have, we get power from both sides of Lorain. We have power coming from the east side, which is, which the east, east tower gets its power from, and, and the west side of Lorain, the west, the west side. So during, when we had our blackout here a couple weeks ago or a couple months ago, we didn't miss a beat. We never lost power, for one. Our auxiliary generators came on and the thing worked, you know, just, just like it's supposed to, but we never lost power. And like I say, auxiliary generators on both sides of the bridge, and works very well. But they did that at the time, added the auxiliary generator. They also added at the time, they replaced the submarine cables that go down under the, under the, under the river. And that was done in nineteen eighty-nine, or nineteen ninety-nine. And also, the next year, the following year, they did a, a new paint, they repainted the bridge. And ODOT tries to repaint these bridges every ten years. After ten years, they really get, so they need, need to be repainted. So that's been four or five years now, so we're probably good for a few more years. That's pretty much what I've got on the history of the bridge and everything. I've got a few things I'd like to touch on, and these are, these are all in the, in the sheet we, Ron passed out for me. Shipping season, there are nine of us that work at the bridge, and shipping season lasts from, from March fifteenth until January, through January the fifteenth. And river traffic has the right of way. So if you're ever down there and you see the boat coming and the bridge is up in the air, river traffic has the right of way over, over vehicle, vehicular traffic. And what we've done, or what the Coast Guard's actually done, commercial, commercial vessels can pass through the bridge anytime they want. Recreational vehicles, meaning basically sailboats, they've limited the time when they, when they could come through the bridge. They can only come through on the hour and the half hour. What they've done, they've set bridge hours. It used to be, they would, the sailboats would come through anytime they would want. And you'd raise the bridge, and then you'd put the bridge back down, and then here'd come the next guy and you'd raise the bridge, you'd put the bridge back down. And this is really, this is really safe. One, it's, that's a safety hazard for any emergency vehicles with the bridge going up and down all the time. And this is really saved on wear and tear on the bridge.
Chuck, is that an automatic, that you raise the bridge?
No, no. If, if there would be someone there, like a sailboat would show up, then you would.
How do you know in advance when they're coming up to?
Getting to that.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I'm getting to that. We have, but we have a marine radio in the tower that they can call on the marine radio. We monitor channel sixteen, and they can call on channel sixteen, or they can call on, on the phone. And that's posted on, on boards, on either side of the bridge. And like I say, they, they, sailboaters pretty much know when the bridge hours are, and they can come through the bridge. But like I say, we have a marine radio in the tower that we communicate with the ships. One of, one of the important things, we, we keep in pretty close tabs with the shipping companies, and we pretty much know when the ships are coming into Lorain. But when, when a ship comes into Lorain, and he's going up to the steel plant, or up to Falbo's, or, or one of the docks up the river, they'll usually give what they call a security call, when they're about two hours away. So we'll talk to the ship and tell them if there's any traffic in the harbor or whatever, and just let them know what's going on. But once the ship gets inside the harbor, pretty much everything is still done with horns. If you're ever down there and you hear the horn blast, you know, when, when a ship comes into the harbor, they'll usually signal, when the captain's ready for the bridge, he'll signal with a long and a short on the, on his horn on the ship. And if we're ready, we always answer with a long and a short. But in the case of emergency, you always answer with five short blasts on the horn. It's much easier, much more understood that a horn signal than trying to contact someone on the radio. He could be on another frequency, he, you know, might not have the radio on, they should have it on, but it's much more, you can always understand the horn signal. And so most of the communication inside the harbor is still done with a horn. So that's just much better. Like I say, bridge hours, approximately fifteen hundred lifts we do a year. Not, it's gone down the last couple of years because we don't have this, this, the base of the steel industry in Lorain, it's, it's slacked off considerably. So we don't do the number of lifts. Most, a lot of the lifts now, we have, we have various docks up the river. There's Gypsum Dock, there's Jonex Dock, there's Terminal Ready Mix, there's an Amcor dock at, at Ninth Street that they do potash, and then also the steel plant. But the shipping, the number of lifts actually has gone down over the years. And when a freighter, when a freighter comes through the bridge, it's usually about a fifteen, twelve to fifteen-minute lift. It seems, if you're sitting there, it seems like forever, and, but it's usually about twelve to fifteen minutes. And a sailboat's usually four to five minutes, is basically all it is. We also have, there's a signal too that I wanted to tell you about at the fire station. Anytime that the bridge goes up, there's a, a light down at the fire station, so they are aware of if we were making a lift. And that's basically, that's basically all I've got. I'd like to plug the website again. I think we have a very interesting website, it's got some interesting links to it, to the Lorain Port Authority. There's one link, links to on Great Lake Shipping, that if you ever want to know anything about Great Lake Shipping, it's on the, it's on the website.
That website is located at W-W-W dot what?
It's W-W-W LorainCounty.us. And it, it can also be reached, it's, it's actually boatnerd.com. I know that's a strange name, but it's a great website, if you wanted to go straight, straight to that website. But take a look at our website, it's, it's pretty neat. That's, that's basically all I've got.
Commissioners, Mr. Mackin's also been giving tours of the bridge when we've had events down at the Black River Landing, correct?
Yes.
And I think they've been very well received, and we've had quite a few people go through the towers and out with the equipment on the bridge, and are you going to continue that program?
Um, if, I, I would, I would actually prefer to do it for more civic groups, scouting groups or, or things like that, but I have no, no problem doing it. The people really enjoy it. Most people don't realize what's, what's actually down there. It's, it's really a neat, neat thing for, for the county, and it's kind of a landmark down in Lorain, and it's really a, it's something to see, it really is. So.
Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate you coming in here and sending us the information.
Like I say, check out the website.
Okay. Thanks, Chuck. We have Rick Novak.
And he's here.
Yes.
Okay.
Rick, are you prepared?
Uh, aye.
Ready? Can you go on now?
Sure.
Okay. Sure.
I asked Rick to be here today, and isn't it nice that he's following Chuck Mackin, who gave the big spiel on the bridge? Because you mentioned the Port Authority, and Rick is the executive director of Lorain County Port Authority. The Delta Institute, I, I'll just read the letter, because that, if I try to explain it, I won't do so well. They sent a thank you letter to the Black River RAP Committee and the Black River Day Planning Committee expressing their thanks. And it says, as most of you know, the event on September sixth was very successful. We had nearly two hundred people join the upriver crews enjoying the informational presentations by the Black River Historical Society and Ohio EPA along the way. Many people also pass through the Black River Day tent and the informational tables there with, among other displays, Ohio EPA's live Black River fish specimens, and Friends of the Wetlands salamander capturing the attention of young and old alike. The Heroes of the Black River Watershed Award Ceremony with County Commissioner Betty Blair presenting the awards to eight two thousand and three heroes focused a spotlight on the efforts of dedicated groups and individuals who provide an inspiring example of environmental stewardship in the Black River watershed. Finally, the Lake Erie Bin National Public Forum, who were holding their meeting in Aluria and who attended the Black River Day on Saturday, expressed great delight and gratitude in being able to take part in the activities, and they look forward to return visits to the watershed. It says again, a million thanks to the Black River RAP Committees and the River Day Planning Committee for making the two thousand and three Black River Day a success. And this is signed by Representatives of the Delta Institute, T.J. Holson, Abby Corso Jarca, and Keith Dimmock. And accompanying it, pictures worth a thousand words, they've got, you can't see it there, but they've got pictures of the activities that day. And Rick Novak was on vacation that day, and so I offered to give him his award, and, which is right here, and I'm going to give it to you in a minute. And then I thought, gee, that would really be nice to have him come to the Commissioners, so that you could know a little bit more about what I did that day. And also, I, I would like to take this opportunity to distribute to anyone who's interested the two thousand and two annual Black River Remedial Action Plan Report, because these people have been working very hard on the Black River, cleaning it up. And then, thirdly, I'd like to tell you that the Delta Institute is going to be a presenter at the October seventeenth Community Summit, which is being held at Lorain County Community College, sponsored by the Lorain County Community Alliance and the Public Services Institute. And we still have our application in to the Delta Institute for Watershed Coordinator, and within the week, I, I think that we'll know definitely whether or not we're going to get funding for that position. And then I'd just like to editorially conclude my comments, and then I will give Rick his real award, and he can say something. But this is my, my thought. Nothing ties Lorain Conians together more than the Black River, whose east and west branches flow from their southernmost headwaters through Carlisle Township where I live, are joined as one in Cascade Park in downtown Aluria, and then flow to Lake Erie, Lake Erie, adjacent to the Lorain Port Authority's newly created Black River Landing, which the Commissioners had a little part in. Because we provided the funding, a million dollars, to the Community Development Department in Lorain to pay for the access to Black River Landing. So I'd like to say that the Commissioners, I think, have been good partners, and I would like to commend Rick Novak for all his work. And I want to give this to you, Rick, and then you can say whatever you like. In fact, you might want to tell a little bit about what you're doing tonight? This is my question, because you're truly a hero of the Black River.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. (applause) Well, I believe this is the first award I've received since the first grade, so I'm really happy to receive it, and to be considered a hero on the Black River. I, I just really want to say that it has truly been a partnership between everybody, as Commissioner Blair indicated, with the county commissioners and the city and everyone else involved in this project. I can tell you though, when we first began the redevelopment plans along the Black River many years ago now, one of the first comments that came up when we were involved in the planning process is, what about the water quality? You know, it's nice that you're going to be doing all these great projects, it's nice you're going to be doing the planning and so forth, but what about the water quality? I'm pleased to tell you that since that time, you know, that question has come up less and less as time has gone on. And that's really a, based upon, you know, all the input that everyone has had in the cleanup efforts. And I really would really like to thank the Black River RAP Group, because they've been phenomenal to work with. We worked hand in hand with them from day one on the Black River Landing site. In fact, it was through their input that we were able to come up with the creative designs for the fish shelves and the habitat areas that we have established in that area. And because of that, number one, it was a tremendous success. In fact, about a month after the fish shelf was first established, Roger Toma from the Ohio EPA went out and did some additional sampling, and found not only did the number of fish along the shoreline increase, but the species as well. So we're really looking forward to this year when they go out and do some additional sampling. But we've also received some national recognition because the fish shelves that we established along the site were really the first time that they were created, we believe, on the U.S. portion of the Great Lakes. So that's very, really gratifying, and it really shows what partnerships and relationships can accomplish. So we're, we're very, very thankful to everyone involved with it. As Commissioner Blair indicated, tonight, one of the things we're going to be doing is we're going to be kicking off the task force for taking a look at the Dyke Disposal Site, which is the fifty-eight acre area that's north of the Marina along the lakefront. It's a site that the Corps has used for a number of years for dredging along the Black River. It's a fifty-eight acre site, and right now, it is basically at capacity. We've been meeting with the Corps for the past couple of years, and we are looking at both short and long-term solutions to what to do about the dredging situation. Because we have to dredge the river in order to allow the big boats to go up to the steel plant and to the other users along the Black River itself. It's going to be very unique, because it really is now a partnership between the Port Authority, Lorain County Metro Parks, and the City of Lorain, and we, hopefully the county will be involved as well. I think it's a tremendous opportunity. We have a great start with Black River Landing. It's going to continue with, obviously, the Harbor Walk Project, and with the pellet terminal along the lakefront that was recently acquired by the city. And now we have what we hope will be the crown jewel for our county. So I want to thank you for all for providing this to me, and hopefully we'll see you at some of the future task force meetings. Thank you.
Congratulations, Rick, and, and keep up the good work. Sounds like you've got a lot going out there.
Definitely, thank you. And thank you for your support. We would not be able to do it without that beautiful roadway out there. Thank you.
It's like you said, we have to work together.
Ma'am Chair, I'd just like to piggyback on what Rick said about the Black River RAP. At the last meeting, which was on September fifteenth, we received a report from Ted Conlin, who is also one of the Black River Hero recipients. And he made a presentation, and I don't have all the details here, but the RAP is going to apply for an area and recovery status for the Black River RAP. So we continue to move forward. It's, it's slow, but it's progress, and so I'm really excited about that. Thank you, Ma'am Chair.
Very good. Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Um, want to go back into executive session?
Yes. Jim? We're done here. Jim, you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioners have reconvened for executive session.
Ma'am Chair, I move adjourned.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aluria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Every year in Lorraine County, hundreds of children are abused and neglected. Many are removed from their homes for their protection. Judges must decide their futures, but they need information to make these critics.
And now we invite you to enjoy a special broadcast from the Lorraine County Commissioners.
This is our 10th barn. Nope, nope, sorry. This is our 11th barn.
It got kind of boring watching the grass grow, so we thought we'd watch the paint dry.
Well, the Ohio Bicentennial Commission was, was born in 1995 by, by order of the Ohio General Assembly. They charged the commission with the duty of celebrating 200 years of Ohio history, culture, science. And the commission then began the task of planning a bicentennial celebration. The goal was always to include every Ohio county in the celebration. And to do that, we really, it was a grassroots up. Instead of a top-down, it was more of a bottom-up approach to the bicentennial, starting with the communities. And we couldn't tell Clark County what to do from Columbus, but Clark County could tell us what they had in mind for the bicentennial. So that was really the, the tack that we took when, when we sat down and said, how are we going to plan the bicentennial? The beginnings in each Ohio county was, was forming groups in each county. And that's where our regional people came in. And they helped kind of light the fire in each county for the bicentennial. And that was kind of hard back then. There was not a lot of kindling to light a fire for the bicentennial, as you can imagine, in 1997 and 1998. So we, we said, how can we get the word out? How can we spread the message of all things bicentennial? One of the original regional coordinators, her name is Nicole Moretti. Nicole is a wonderfully creative person from Megs County, down in the Appalachian section of Ohio. We're, they were at a meeting and Nicole, out of the blue, said,
Barns, barns make a lot of sense in my district. Can't you see this logo all over barns in rural counties all over Ohio?
And about the next thought everybody had in their mind was, great, how do we paint a barn?
The general consensus of the office was, if we could figure out how to do it, we would try it. But I called paint stores and I called all these places and nobody seemed to know how to do that anymore.
So Nicole was, took it upon herself to, to see if it could go. And she was in, I forget what town it was.
Barnesville. And was in the Chamber of Commerce in Barnesville. And somebody had to take a phone call. And like any good former journalist, I read the stuff on the desk while I waited. And one of them was a Barnesville Enterprise. And on the front cover of the Barnesville Enterprise was a beautiful barn scotched and painted.
In the photo was a picture of a barn. And on the barn was a logo of the Ohio State University, painted by, at that time, 19-year-old kid.
And I didn't know, but my, my grandfather snapped a picture of it. And he took it to Barnesville and had it developed. And then he took it over to Barnesville Enterprise. And I didn't know he was doing this, but they saw a picture of it and liked it well enough to put on the front page of their Barnesville Enterprise.
And she took that front page. She immediately called the, the Ohio Bicentennial Office in Columbus and said,
I found him, I found him. He's wheeling, I'm in Barnesville.
It fell into, into place with Nicola coming down at the right time because that barn of ours had been on the front page of the Barnesville Enterprise.
And with that, she went off to find our barn painter.
I think we ended up having conversations over the phone for the next month, on and off. And then finally, I went up to Columbus and we talked about doing one barn in every county in the state.
If you go back and look at our, our announcement of the project back then and the press releases, it was, our goal was, was to paint at least one barn in each county. We didn't say we were going to do it because we didn't know if we were going to do it. We didn't know if Scott was going to do it. We didn't know if we wanted his logo on every barn. Was he good enough? Did he have the talent? Did he have the skills? Did he have the, what it took to travel from every county in Ohio? I mean, we're talking about a kid.
We had discovered Scott and we decided that we wanted to attempt this and see how it worked out. And we chose an out-of-the-way barn in Belmont County so that we could try it, not necessarily directly in the public eye, see how it went, explore the possibilities.
The first barn was in Belmont County because that's the county I'm from. And I think it, we went ahead and did that since it was local and close for me. And I even helped pick out that barn. And in those days, we kind of had to go door to door to find barns because no, no one knew of it. And even to describe what we were doing, I think, took a little time.
And at the end of three days, we decided it was good enough for local media. We wanted some improvement before we released it statewide. And if we would make a decision to do that, it might come at a later time. We invited all the local media, but the Wheeling Register was one of the papers that came. They took a fantastic picture of the barn. And they were proud of it. They put it up on the AP wire. And the next morning, we were on the front page of the Cleveland Plain Dealer.
And, and that's kind of how it began. It began in a very, I like to say we were Madison Avenue geniuses and knew that sure, we were going to have great media attention and, and barn groupies and, and all that has happened. But it was pretty hit and miss at that point. We didn't know how this project would pan out and if it would even be more than a one-barn project. Nearly 2,000 barn owners have, have applied to have their barns receive the logo. Now, we can't do 2,000 barns. We're doing one official barn in each county. So the selection criteria is, we have three things that we look for.
Barns that are made out of wood, ones that are in good condition. That makes my job a lot easier. And barns that are on a high-traveled road so people can see them.
Each coordinator will go out and look at the barns that have applied to have the logo. In some counties, it could be as few as 20. In others, it could be as many as 50. But they will go out and, and actually look at the barn and see if it meets our criteria. The part of the project that, that's often overlooked is the part of the project that makes the project possible. That's the person working over my shoulder right now.
Well, you know, growing up, I never, I don't remember sitting in the classroom saying, when I grew up, I want to be a barn painter.
He, he just loves art of all kinds. And so he experimented, of course, on our barn. But we, we enjoyed everything that he did.
We could not do this without Scott Hagan. And not just because of his skill with a paintbrush. That's what everybody knows. I know Scott Hagan as a person. I've worked with Scott Hagan and Scott Hagan has become my friend.
The story I always tell to everyone is this. I said a prayer for Scott when he got out of school, that God would find him something in art, because that's what he, his love was in art. So with tears streaming down my face, I prayed for him to find something. And I never dreamed it would be this big. And this is what God did for Scott.
He is a wonderful ambassador for the state of Ohio and really is our true, our only true statewide ambassador. He travels to every county representing the Bicentennial Commission.
But the people everywhere seem to be really awesome people, really willing to help you. I remember needing directions on several occasions. And I remember a guy, I just pulled over and asked for directions. And then he said, I'll tell you what, I'll just, he'd just follow me and I'll run you right down there. And I know he was busy doing something else. But just things like that, I mean, I'll never forget that kind of thing.
He does it as a professional. He is a wonderful person to work with.
Well, the first interview I had was in Belmont County. I remember that pretty well. That was on my birthday. And I looked into the camera and I thought of the long haul he was going to have, 88 barns. And it just sounded like so much. And so I remember telling them on the camera, I said, you know, I just hope that everybody out there will take good care of Scott. And I feel that they will. And I, I just felt like there's a lot of good people out there. I know there are. And I know he's going to come home and tell me about a lot of these, which he did. And, and I want to thank those women who put him up. Because they had no idea who he was. They didn't know what he really was all about. And, you know, it's hard to trust people anymore. But he had a lot of nice places to stay and I really am grateful. I'm grateful for those people that put him up. I, I appreciate it so much.
He is dependable. He's hardworking, honest as the day is long. A consummate gentleman, wonderful with the public. And he's 25 years old. What are the chances of that? I mean, we, we turned a 20-year-old kid loose on the state of Ohio. And we are, we are much the better for it. I can't say enough about working with Scott. Now, any of the barn followers, there are so many of them out there, have probably noticed Scott's technique, how it has changed and how he would be the first to admit that it's improved from that first barn in Belmont County.
I know that the first few barns were, were pretty hard with that big script O. And I had a lot of trouble with the big O. And the first year and year and a half, I'd mess around for hours trying to get that big O right.
His technique has gotten so much better. And, and the style has gotten better and changed. It's much bolder. His lines are, are bolder from the, from the way he does Ohio to the, to the almost perfect lines of the bicentennial, the way he writes it. The, the logo flows much freely now. It's not as stiff on the surface.
Well, I never really had any form of art training. Or people always ask me, you know, how long did you go to college or that? I didn't go to any art school or anything like that. I just kind of learned it for myself. My mother has a lot to do with that and her mother because they have artistic talent as well.
He approaches each barn the same way, looks for the same types of characteristics. Is there a window in the way? Is there, are there vents on each side? A lot of barns, you know, they were working farms. So they need to vent the heat out of the top of the barn. So if you're storing hay or something, so they're going to have vents, they're going to have windows. They might have a door to use to access the top part of the barn. These are all things that he looks at when he, when he, when he approaches a site, when he sees the site for the first time.
What, what usually happens is a bicentennial ceremony.